We are live. Hello, everyone, and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oil. I'm Coach Ashley. Today, we are joined by founders of Get Oil and Greg and Amanda Kilwin. Hey, guys.
Hello.
Hello.
We also have Colin from our team. Hey, Colin.
Hey, everybody.
And you guys, today, we have a very special guest with us. We have Mercedes Talmage. Hi, Mercedes.
Hey, everyone.
We're so thrilled to have you back. You guys, you may have seen, it's probably been over a year now, I think, maybe more than, yeah, anyway, it's been a while. You were so kind as to come out previously and to share with our community some of the ways that you use Get Oil and sort of how it pulls into your bigger strategy. So we're really thrilled to be able to share that with with the community today and just so honored that you are willing to come out and really kind of give us a peek behind the scenes or a look over your shoulder. You know, when we were in grade school, it was not okay to look at other people's work, but as a business owner, it kind of is. It's how we kind of see what's possible for ourselves. So Mercedes has been so generous today to let us take that peek. And I guess first, just some housekeeping, you guys. We are going to be doing some screen sharing today. It's not a slide presentation. It's not a sales presentation. We are literally just looking at what Mercedes is doing and having a Q and A here. But if you came here today looking for specific help, we are here for you. This is a live session that we hold every Thursday at noon Eastern where you can get hands-on help. So if you're here for that, put your question in the Q and A and let us know so that we can help you either right here, right now, or at the close of the call, where we can do some more screen sharing and that kind of thing. Now, also, for those of us who are here live, head over to the chat. Where are you coming in from? What are you excited to learn about today? What are you hoping to maybe see or understand better from looking at what someone else is doing? So definitely come and put those things in the chat. And in the meantime, I'm going to switch over to our speaker view, Mercedes. Tell us a little bit about you and your oily journey.
Well, hey, so my name is Mercedes and I am Team Karen Candor. I have been using essential oils for about two and a half years, Young Living, and I have been doing the business for about two years. So it didn't take me long to jump in. I live here in Georgia, married, two dogs, blue healer mama here, so life is crazy. Yeah, I love I love oils. I love Get Oil and I love Young Living, so I'm in a good spot right now, guys.
Such a great spot to be in, and we're so glad that you're a part of this community. You guys definitely keep it coming in the chat. We've got folks coming in from, it looks like right now, all over the US, but we tend to have folks from all over the world. And thank you, Australia. You beat me to it. Mercedes also has amazing hair. Just.
Yeah.
We'll have a separate conversation about what products you use. But anyway, in the meantime, let's get to what we are here for today. So would you please maybe tell us a little bit about your journey as a brand partner, right? So how you maybe got started as a brand partner? And then, of course, we will be getting into how you operate as a brand partner today, but like, what was sort of the push behind that for you?
Okay, so here's my why. Financial freedom in order to get paid, no matter where my husband and I are volunteering around the United States. Volunteer work is huge. It's a very big, important part of our lives. So that's one of my number one whys. My number two why is to support family, the opportunity to have a team to put people into and to build under and provide financial support to my family. It's huge for me, especially with the needs of my my family and some of them. That was a huge opportunity. And my third why is I've been a 1099 my entire life. Hello, retirement. So if I stick with this long enough, I'm going to have residual income when I don't want to work no more. And hopefully that comes earlier than later. So those are my three, my three pushes behind being a brand partner.
I love it. And how long have you been sharing?
Probably about two years. I think two years in October, maybe. Yeah, it'll be two years in October. So I'm new.
Okay, fabulous. And so before you got started with with Get Oil and using our system, what was, you know, how did you go about growing your business, getting new customers at that point?
So to be straight honest with you, there was no experience before Get Oil. I had Get Oil since before I was a star. So the second I jumped into being a brand partner, I had no upline. So anybody out there who doesn't have an active upline, like you can be what you're missing. So don't let that stop you. Throw that out the window. Get rid of it. So I didn't have an active upline. It's like, okay, what am I going to do? So obviously went into research mode. What is out there to help brand partners? And Get Oil is one of the first things I saw, and I only had to see it a couple of times. And I was like, this is everything I need. This is my Zoom. This is my phone. This is my vault. This is my website. Like, yes. So when I saw this, I knew that this was the foundation I needed to grow my business. And I knew when I saw Get Oil that once I established that foundation, it was going to take me through diamonds. So once all my systems are in place, all my pages are made, my vault is made or whatever, like the first, the first little while is hard. Like, I know all y'all out there. I've been there. But once it's set, it's like, this is going to roll me through. So Get Oil is really all I know.
That's amazing. I did not.
Yeah, this wasn't rehearsed, guys. That was that was straight honesty.
Well, that's, I mean, that's something that you're known for, right? Candor is part of your brand. So let's actually, let's talk about that a little bit, right? So how are you getting new customers right now? How are people finding you, getting to know you, and then ultimately signing up?
Yeah, so I'm not like your traditional multi-level marketer, social seller. Like, I have never hosted an in-person class. I'm working on it. Don't judge me, okay? And then, so for the most part, Instagram and samples. Instagram and samples is the way that it works. And when I use both of those, they tie right back to Get Oil almost right away.
Awesome. So can we see what that looks like?
Yeah, absolutely. Also, I don't mind, I don't know, can I pull from the comments at all?
Oh, 100%. Yeah, you have this floor. Yeah.
So Liz, hey, what's up? I saw your comment and I want to let you know that I relate with you. And let me tell you how much I relate with you. I have anxiety and OCD and no, not just in some adjective, I'm diagnosed. And so I totally understand the obsessive thinking, overthinking, overanalyzing and being nervous. But I did it. So it's looking you. So I just wanted to shout that out. And then, second, let me show you kind of what, how I use Get Oil, I guess, just to kind of introduce or what my customers see. The first thing that I, that are in my sample, so this is a sample packet that I keep on me all the time, okay? It just has a sample card and it has my business card and a little roller inside of it. But this is all my business card is, guys. And it's just a QR code. This QR code goes to my link page on my G O. So, or my Go, my Get Oil. I'll show you what that looks like. So it keeps my card super simple, but it also allows me to adjust any information I want my customers or potential customers to see without having to change my business card. So this QR code stays exactly the same to my link page, and I just have to get go into my Get Oil to adjust it if I want them to see something else. But right now, when they scan this, this is what they see. So this is my link page that's been created in my Get Oil. There was a live session, like a year, year and a half ago, about creating a fake Linktree with Get Oil, and that's exactly what I did. So I just decided what I want my potential customers to see, and this is what I decided they want me. This is what I decided I wanted them to see is this. So when they scan my business card, all it has is my business name, the fact that I sell oils and non-toxic products, my name and my number. And if I would have made this after I purchased the Get Oil separate phone number, I would have utilized that. But right now, I have my cell phone number. And when they scan the QR code, there's this. So what's really awesome is once they scan this, this is going to be in their in their phone memory. This is going to be in their history. So how many of us actually keep a business card? None. None of us keep these. They're really cute for like two seconds, but nobody keeps them. But once they scan it out of curiosity and then they lose the card, they can go to their search engine and go to their history and should be like, oh, she, where was that? I met that one chick and she had that one thing. And they see this. They can contact me. They can shop Y L. They can see my bundles. They can see my fur babies, my fur baby stuff, all of it. And I can create anything I want. I could change this like this, and then they could see something completely different if I wanted them to.
Okay.
The second thing is, oh, go ahead.
Hold on, real quick, real quick, real quick. So what what I want to just make sure, like, just to recap, so for anybody who's like, whoa, slow down, what is this stuff? Okay, what what we're talking about so far is that when Mercedes is in person and she hands a business card to someone, she's got minimal information on that card. And the main thing that she's pointing to, the call to action, if you will, on that card is a QR code. That QR code, which is the thing you you hold your your camera on it, you guys have seen this, that QR code and whatever QR code maker you use, and we'll ask you about that in a second. You are pointing to a link page that you created with Get Oil. Right? That link page has buttons that go to all different kinds of things, including a shop link for Young Living. Okay, so let's keep going.
I saw one question from Liz. How long does it take me to get into the groove? I always feel bad when I'm on here, but you guys know I'm honest. So I'm going to tell you, it was hard at first, but I'm going to tell you why it was hard. I didn't necessarily follow the team's advice. The team gives you great advice. It can be super overwhelming. I have no tech background. I've never built a website in my life. I was it would take me three hours to figure out how to like adjust a website for a second, and I'd get super overwhelmed. But if you write on paper what you want, what do you want in your system? And then put little checkboxes by it and only do one at a time, utilizing the live sessions for each one. You'll be okay. Don't try and attack it all at once. It's not going to work for you guys. Me, it took me, I don't know, two or three months of sincere effort to really get to the point where now I can just go into a page, change something like that shop Young Living link. I added that this morning, like five minutes before we got on. I was like, got it. So two or three months of sincere trying and not giving up on yourself, setting boundaries, don't get so absorbed in it that you get obsessed and stressed and end up in tears. Like, it's not worth that. But you can totally get a hang of it. And then to answer someone else's question, yes, so two of those buttons, the fur babies and the emotions and oils are both sways. Those go to sway links. So if you click on it, it's going to take them to information that looks like this. So I wanted that as information more so than just like click and purchase. Yeah, there is a link. I'm sure Greg can find it. There is a link to the training. I didn't do it, though, but I benefited from it of how to create the link page, and they even have a free template, and it's super easy. You upload it in Canva and just click and replace. It's really.
I just put that into the chat. You guys may need to scroll up just a bit to find it. We're pretty active here today. But, oh, but by the way, our Attractwell, our sister platform, we are doing a live training on this topic, creating these link pages at 2:00 today, and that link is in the chat as well. So Mercedes, tell us a little bit about, you know, let's talk about sort of the experience of from meeting someone to them taking an action so that you are, you know, that they're in your funnel, if you will, or in your pipeline. There's someone who is a lead for you. What happens after you, maybe they go to that page or you hand them your card? Like, what is the sort of flow here that we're following?
Yeah. So like I said, I'm still kind of new. So it's not like I have some like diamond amount of people like flooding to my door asking for essential oils, but there is a flow. It may be more of a trickle, but there is a trickle. For the most part, samples are huge, and then I'm handing them to people I usually know or interact with more than once. So when you, you know, they they get the sample, they click on the information, they can scroll through it, they love the information, and then they reach back out with another question or they say, oh, I'm ready. Or on Instagram, share, 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 and then it's just usually in a DM, hey, I noticed this, what's going on? Or if you, you know, don't ever be a hey girl, but when you reach out in a nice way, when you already have a relationship, you just ask questions, ask what they think, tell them thank you for being there, and just conversation actually progresses. I'm not salesy. I've actually never done a cold call. I don't really do them.
I don't even know if people do that anymore. Would it be possible for you to click through and show how that, like, if somebody clicks on one of these links, like for your starter bundles, maybe, or really any of them?
Of course. Um, I'm not super skilled at the whole, like, mobile view, guys, so it might not look as cute as it does on the computer. But the shop living link is super simple. This is just my referral. They go to Young Living's website, but anything that they buy or do, it's going to be under my name, obviously. I already showed the fur babies, but if you click under Starter Bundles, this is going to take me to another Get Oil page. And this page I created literally Starter Bundles. So there's the ones Young Living has. And if they click the picture, boom, they they're taken to the Young Living website, has my number already in there. They hit buy. They're on my team. So I, the good thing about Get Oil that I love is it's it connects, it all connects to itself. So they just kind of go down this path, and I'd have no, I have nothing to do with it. Like, hey, I really want to try Ningxia. Cool. Go to my link, hit bundles and click on Ningxia, and let me know when you order it. I'll send you a gift. It's it's all that easy. And then when you scroll down, these are curated, curated Starter Bundles based on like body systems. So, I mean, I put it together. So if they click here, they're going to go to the My Y L that has a pre-filled cart of all those things from that, from that kit. If they scroll down, of course, here, I tell them, don't worry, like, I got your back. You're not going to do this by yourself. Here's another set of bundles by need. And then again, if you click on them, they're going to take you to the pre-filled cart with those products. So they can just kind of browse and buy. Oil and kiddos, that's another sway. Ningxia is a page I created on Get Oil. So I made this, and believe me, you don't have to know what you're doing. That's my fence. You don't have to have pretty areas, guys. Just do portrait mode and everything looks hardcore amazing. And then you scroll, there's pictures. This button takes them straight to add it to an E R, which I need to change, obviously. Free recipe card there. I embedded, thanks to Greg, a link here. So this is the sway of Ningxia. They got all that info, and then they have related products down here that my number is embedded in.
That is so cool. You know, one thing Mercedes that I noticed.
Yeah.
The la, like, one of the things that I noticed is that you don't have a custom homepage.
Right. Okay, yeah, so that's, that's on my notes. That's right here. It says, need help with homepage and funnels.
So I think this is, this is, I think, a really important thing for everybody here to understand. What Mercedes is doing, the main page that she is using is a link page that you can make today.
Yeah.
Right? You don't have to have a bunch of complicated stuff to get started. So that's, I love that that's what you're doing. So do you spend a lot of time on Instagram? Is that how you're getting a lot of conversations started with people?
Yeah, that's my, that's my main source. I follow like Kristen Boss's method for like 60 days, 60 minutes daily on social media. So that's, that's my main source for sure.
Love it. Okay, so tell us more. Tell us more. We are all.
Okay, so how long did it take you to get in the groove? Two to three months-ish, if you're really trying. Yes, Kristen Boss, someone else, Sarah, see, I got you. Kristen Boss is amazing. But I'm not here to talk about Kristen Boss, but yes, she is. Do it messy, guys. Do it messy. Don't be scared to just make your page, make your link page, get it up. Just get it up. You can make it pretty later. No, okay, so somebody asked me about registering. I like to put myself in my customer's shoes. I hate to register on a page. So if I'm shopping and they're like 10% off, if you did it up, I don't like that. I am one of those people who gets frustrated and always hits the X. And I don't want to invoke that in my customers. So I'm not a huge fan of them having to register, so they just go straight to it. Yes, the new website does allow for things. I don't know how expensive it is and how many items you can buy or how many links you can have at a time. Okay. So, sorry, I'm just trying to read. Liz, there is instructions. So when you download that free template of the link, the link page, at the bottom, they've actually typed out step by step exactly what to do. And you can leave that there and just hide it. So every time you open your page, it's there, but your customers can't see it. Yeah, I can share it again. This is my link, my link page. Someone said, can you share it again?
All right, I'm actually going to put the link to the the resource bundle as well in the chat here. If you guys want to use it, because it does have instructions on the page, but do make sure that you scroll up in the chat, you guys, and find the video that walks through it. All right, so Mercedes, what happens next?
What happens next? Well, hopefully they see that or we chat or whatever, and I send them a link and they purchase something. And then the next thing that they get, because Young Living is going to be like, yo, you got a new member. So the next thing that they get is this in a text message. Like, hey, what's up? My name is Mercedes. You're on my team. And then, of course, down here, it's going to say, you're going to get an invitation to our online team education space. Boom. They know that it's coming. So that's me introducing myself, getting them ready, letting them know their welcome package is going to come. I have them here. It depends on what, it depends on what they bought, but they get that. So they they have the intro and they know that that email from Get Oil is coming. So then they're going to get an email from Mike at Oil that says, hello, our team education, that's Canyon, our team education space is online. Click here to create your name and your password. It's that simple. And if they lose it or delete it because they don't know it's from you, all you have to do is go into your Get Oil under their contact and hit resend. And that happens a lot. So I just resend it, and they're like, oh, that's what that was. They use the same email they did with Young, their Young Living account and throw a password in. Once they do that, they're going to have access to my vault, which all of us, well, most of us, know what that is. So what your vault is, is like a custom online space that they have to have access to. I've heard it compared to like a Facebook group. So a private Facebook group is kind of how it functions. And this is what they see when they go in. Hey, welcome to the team space. And so I created these graphics on some free app somewhere. It doesn't, it took me like an hour to do all of these, guys. Like, don't overthink it. It's just throw your custom color up and type some words, but each one of these is like a separate part of my vault, so they can click and explore and learn and communicate with our team. The first one I put at the top is discussion board, because I think it's super important to try and get people to join. That is pinned, so you will always see this one at the top. It's a punch card for our team. And then you'll see our team chat, our team chat. Someone did bingo. Yay. So they finished, they get a prize. So, yeah, so this is our team chat, and they can just go through and they can scroll. You could pull in a website from somebody else like this or a webpage. I didn't create this webpage. It was through someone else. I got in a bundle, so I threw that up there. And this is a class, Essential 101. Of course, I direct them. They go into my class and they're going to take lesson by lesson of Essential Oil 101s and when they click it, they're going to get not only my video, but they're going to get a description. They're going to get anything I post, and then they're also going to see they should see. You can, oh, here it is. Within these classes, you have your video and your information, but if you see over here, you can actually attach any PDFs. So when they go through here, they're going to get me walking them through the 12 Starter Bundle oils. But in the writing, I tell them to download this PDF first. When they get it, they're going to have 12 spaces or 12 slots to follow my video along and write down notes so that they can know what to utilize and when. And then they just go through class by class, and then there's a discussion at the bottom that I encourage people so that they can communicate with me and communicate with others. Other cool thing about Good Oil is remember you can turn any word into a link. So here is information for every single one of these oils. If I tap lavender, it's going to take me to lavender spotlight and boom, they have more information. So my my main objective with Get Oil is to put everything really easy to understand right in front of their face, and they can gain as much as they want or ignore as much as they want without being overwhelmed.
So, yeah. That is the beauty of using a member area. I love how you've done that, and you've got a lot of love in the comments here for your design, for sure.
Yo, it's free. It's a free app. I'm telling you, like, once you, you'll notice I picked two colors and it was black and teal, and I was just like, let's roll. And everything looks so great when you just, when they match.
That's amazing. So what what do you use, by the way? Let's kind of go back to the beginning, because obviously Get Oil is the main thing that we're talking about here. But if somebody wanted to sort of, you know, do what you're doing, starting with, say, the the QR code maker, like, is that, was that just a free tool? Did you just Google QR code maker? Like, what did you do?
I absolutely did. So I just copied my link page I created and go and Googled free QR code. And it did it. And then I saved it as a picture, and then whatever I need, I just throw it on. So it was super simple.
Beautiful. And so for your, for your graphics, do you use Canva? Like, what do you, what do you use for for designing stuff?
So this, like, all of these, I literally just created in like some free app. I think now, I don't even know what it's called. It's just some, I think it's called Studio. You could use Canva if you wanted, but I just threw up a backdrop and searched. Like, I knew, for example, like for wallet-friendly oils, I just searched free money image. Whatever popped up, I used. I didn't pay any money for this, because I was like, nah, man. So just type in free money image, and I threw it up. And then I was like, what's the title going to be? And I threw it up. These, you can find a lot of silos or like background-free images on Life Steps, but Young Living actually for the last couple of months released background-free images of all of their welcome gifts or their their monthly gifts with purchase. So if you download all those, you'll have a lot of those. So this is from Life Steps. If you see like a photo, this is how they get my app, and that picture is from your guys' website. I screenshot it, cropped it and threw it on. So it's really not as complicated as it looks. I, whatever you're looking, whatever you're going to utilize, just type in free image and then whatever you want, like in your Canva or your studio, and then utilize that. But I definitely had my vault first, and then I added photos later. Like, don't try and do everything all at once, because you're just going to get super stressed. Figure out what you want your vault to look like first. Write it out. Like, when I, when someone comes into my vault, what do I want them to see? And I decided I want them to see this, this, this. I target each one a little bit at a time. And then when that was set, I was like, okay, now I can make it pretty. So that's when I made those images and threw them on.
That's amazing. And guys, we do have free trainings that show you how you can plan and build something like this out, and you don't have to have images to to create this. All right. So this is, so we've covered how you are connecting people to your main sort of hub, your link page. And the fact that you're using the QR code means you can point to any page and Get Oil whenever you want to. If you eventually wanted to have a custom homepage, you could point it there. But that, you know, you don't have to go redesign and get reprinted those cards, which is amazing. So tell us, tell us more. Are there any other kind of key ways that you use Get Oil or or things that you feel like you really get from using Get Oil that, you know, that you wouldn't have had otherwise? Yeah, just, people are loving this.
Yeah, I didn't, I haven't seen if somebody dude, yes, I am not like team while all the way. If there's something you need, if I still have it, I'll send it to you, like. Just, you can find me on Insta. So just find me on Insta and we can chat. If you want like graphics or whatever, like, it would not hurt. It would be, make me feel great if someone just threw these on there.
So by the way, you guys, just so we don't miss anything, and Mercedes doesn't miss anything, please make sure if you've got questions that you go over to the Q and A so that so we don't miss you.
Um, my IG handle is, hold on a second. Candidly caring. Because, well, if you get to know me, you're going to know I'm real honest. I love you real hard. And there are a lot of free services out there, yeah.
Real quick, there's a couple. Oh, real quick, I want to answer a couple of questions here that came through. So for those of you who don't know Linktree, we were talking about Linktree earlier. It is a party, a third-party service that's not us, where you can either for free, but you're branding them or paid. They make a page for you that you either get for free and you can't really do much with it in terms of design, or you pay for there to be a page with buttons on it. That's it. And so if you're using Get Oil, you don't need a Linktree. But what a Linktree is, is like a link in bio, right? So it's like, if you're ever on Insta and somebody's like, click the link in bio to learn more about whatever. That's what we're talking about here. And and the cool thing is, and again, if you watch the training that we've linked, and we'll make sure to link it in the description for the recording here, you can, if you're into it, collect leads from your, from your link page with Get Oil as well, which is not a thing that Linktree even offers.
Yes.
All right. All right, tell us more.
All right, um, let me see what other needs to be. When creating the landing pages, is there a way to edit, change a photo? Couldn't figure that out yesterday. There is, but you're going to learn real quick that, like, I am not huge in like landing pages and homepages. I just, I, I'm not saying I'm not going to be, but that's just not where I naturally went. I naturally went to like caring for my team first and building foundations for later. And like this, what I showed you is like, that that link page is my landing page. And I figured that was better than like your traditional for me personally, because I'm a, I'm a get to it. I want the information, give it to me now person, not like a to find what you need to find. Like, I want them to be like, do you have a dog? Do you have a human child? Do you want to buy a bundle? Or do you want to just shop the website? Do you want to buy a bundle? Or do you want to just shop the website? And I wanted to just hit it. How do you strike up combos on my IG? Time. Um, this is for Jolene Burger. It's just time. Uh, I just hit a button. I don't know what I did. You have to create relationships when you do social media. You, people have to know you, like you and trust you. You have to show up every day to the point where these people feel like they know you and they trust what you have to say. The same way that you feel about if you want to go shopping or you need some clothes off Amazon, you know you have someone in mind on Instagram that you're gonna go to be like, hey, hey, where's that link at? You need to become that for oils. You need me, a mental health focus. I need somebody to be like, yo, I'm crazy. My family's crazy. Somebody's crazy in my life. Mercedes is that crazy girl. She's got the solution. That's kind of like, that's my thing. So people, you have to create that relationship with people and they'll naturally discuss things with you. But don't throw your products in their face. Just show you. I personally choose that my feed is kind of like my niche and I share my oils and my products in my stories every day. But it doesn't take long. If they see you rolling something on in a reel, or showing something or how you use something on a poster in a story. Eventually they might say, hey, I'm out of my cleaner, but I noticed that you had that thief stuff. Like, what's that about? Or hey, I've noticed that you kind of are a health focused. Do you have anything that works with like thyroid? Do you have anything? It it happens naturally. You can't force it. Um, but it takes time. You can't give up. You gotta stay consistent because people have to trust you, know you enough to just reach out. Think about like how often you DM and the relationship that you have with that person before you do. Starter bundles. And now the Young Living has that extra $25 back. I think they realized when I took that $25 away, oops, it's back now and it should be, in my opinion. So hit with starter bundles. They're curated for a reason. They're just great. I don't do custom bundles that often. I did, I do once or twice if it's like a serious like health thing that they're trying, like I knew someone who's respiratory focused. They're like, I need help because I'm blah, 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 blah. But for the most part, if they're just in general, hit them with a starter bundle.
There's a question here in the chat. Realistically, Liz asks, realistically with the dollar trial, how long would it take to get a decent website up and running? I really want this to work. And Get Oiling is basically a one and done. So you're actually seeing an example today, Liz. Of an approach that does not require you to have a homepage. Where you can have a a mobile friendly, if you are social media, like very social media active. Have a link page and have that be the first thing that you create. You have built in themes with Get Oiling that are ready to share right out of the gates. So if you look up, uh, so two things I would recommend that you do. Go to, you can actually see this is Mercedes. This is her homepage. This is a built in page on Get Oiling. And in the US and in really in all markets, you have several different options for what the focus is, right? If it's pets or if it's general wellness, if it's culinary, whatever that might be. So you'd select whichever one that is that you prefer. And then the two trainings I would recommend, if you really want to get things started quickly and you are a social media person like like Mercedes here is. Is that you get this link in bio training. Which again, we've we've put into the Q and A in the chat or into the chat. And we also again are gonna be doing a live one on our other platform at two o'clock Eastern time US today. But um, but then you also want to grab the trainer, just look up in in Get Oiling in the search features, link, leg builder links. Because then you can actually have a button on your link page for pets, for babies, and all the pages are already made. They're all already coded to you. So you don't even have to develop anything. You just make a page that just links all the stuff. And it's, and it's done. You could do that today. Like realistically, that that's a thing you could get done in an afternoon.
Yeah. Uh, like what I was just scrolling, I didn't touch that, that top of the box. That homepage has been that, it's been, my my homepage has been what you guys gave me from day one. I haven't touched it. Um, someone asked me what I'm using for my video. I'm using a third party app.
Oh, right, for when you're kind of picture and picture scrolling. I forgot to big note that the last time you were on with us, it's the coolest thing.
Um, how do I do 60 minutes with KB? Uh, all right. Um, if if you can, just go to Kristen Boss's website and she's got a $27 thing and a $9 thing. Just do them. Because the coaching is just worth it. It's just worth it. She has a social selling academy, which most of us know that's a lot more expensive, but do those. That she'll, she'll break it down. If you reach out to me on my DMs, I can break it down for you. But I don't want to take Get Oiling's time breaking down what Kristen teaches us to do in an hour. But if you reach out to me, I can, I can help guide you through it. Um, Cheryl, how many products do I put in my bundle? Okay, if you were watched last time, you know, all of my bundle are, I cheat sheet everything, you guys. You've got a cheat sheet. If you don't, you're gonna get so overwhelmed. Every single one of my bundles is um, from life steps. But they are. So obviously those bundles are from Young Living. But all of these life steps has bundles pre-curated for you. That's where these photos are from. So if you have, if you pay for it, they have those photos. And then I just literally took the products that are in those photos and created a MYOL with it. And then that's it.
By the way, there is a training that we did with you previously. We'll have to fish up the link for that. But it's on our YouTube channel where Mercedes actually teaches how she did that. So if you want to create bundles on a page, there is another training that teaches that.
Yeah, so I just, I did that. So I put quite a few on there. But starter bundles really, that's when the Young Living came out. But starter bundles is definitely at the top for a reason. And I just kind of put the ones from life steps that I felt was most appropriate, like fitness, muscular skeletal, refresh your home, women's hormones, things like that. And how do I offer them in a class or a cold market? I'm not the person Cheryl, because I've never, I've never just cold called. If I, if if I'm with a cold market, I always give a sample out. I don't know if you went to convention, but Lacey Dilworth is my girl, like kindred spirits. If you know who Lacey is, you just know. But she had a training at the convention and she said she gave oils out like nobody's business. Share them samples. Get, keep five, 10 of these on you a week and your goal is to just give them out. That's my new goal. I gave them to my post office worker. The other day when I went to a restaurant, I just stuck it, I stuck it in the, what's the receipt, the check. I was just like, here you go. I left a gift for you. Call me if you like it. Um, just share them. But I've never, I've never taught a class either, so I can't answer that one either, Cheryl. I'm sorry. Uh, and Amanda's starter bundles is definitely probably more common, definitely more common for me. What else do I share? I don't know. What else do you guys want to see? I can show more of my vault. I know vaults are confusing for a lot of people. I can go through this a little bit slower. So discussion board, it's, you can add that. It's a Go, Get Oiling feature. All you have to do is literally go into the settings and. Click discussion board and it pops up and people can chat. When people can chat, your team can post, comment, like, they can do anything that they can on Facebook. It's awesome. This is where I share my everything. I do not have a team Facebook. I do not know how to work Facebook. Facebook overwhelms me. I get stressed out. I only use this and IG, that's it. And I don't use IG for my team. There's no test separate team. I don't have some separate team page, like Get Oiling is my everything. I don't have a team Facebook or a team Instagram. If I want to talk about restock, I put it here. If I want to talk about team challenges, I put it here. If I want to do first of the month, anythings, gifts with purchases. Holly's new book I wanted to talk about, I put it, it all goes here. And I, it's hard, but it takes time for your team to utilize the discussion board. Because the majority of my team, um, they're just, they're millennials and they're just not. We just want, what, what's up? Okay, that's it. So I actually had to do a team challenge around the discussion board. So last month I gave point values for anyone who left a comment on an instant class. I gave point values for someone who posted and someone who commented on someone else's posts to make sure my team knew what our discussion board and our team space was all about. This Y essential oils right here, that's another page I got from someone else. I copied and put it in. Essential 101 is the class. So your vault is the whole box. Your classes are. Several little lessons put together. So if you want Essential 101, there's multiple classes inside. So it's like a big box with a smaller box inside where they can get all your little lessons. So there's the difference between a vault and a class. Then there's instant classes. That's just a term I kind of made up, but all this is, is a class with tons of sways. So they can just scroll and they can click any link they want. It's divided by category. Your Get Oiling allows you to set categories. So they can scroll through and I call them instant classes. Every single one of those is a sway from Grow Workspace. Again, borrow, borrow, borrow. With, with permission, obviously, I pay for those.
Real quick Mercedes, about your, um, the challenge, which is such a good idea. Can you, as a couple of questions about point value, points for what, uh, what, what is the function there? You're giving away point value.
So highest point, oh, so I gave away a whimsy wellness roller set and a keychain. It might even be in there somewhere, but I sent a mass text message because obviously I'm trying to get people into my team area. So they're, they're not already there. So posting the challenge in there would be probably not productive. So through Get Oiling, I sent a mass text message just to my entire team with a picture of my giveaway and saying, hey, team challenge. I want to make sure you guys know this information is here. Knowledge is crucial to growth. Get in there, get active, and I'm gonna give this away to someone who activates most. So I gave five points to anybody who posted because I thought that was the most valuable. I gave three points to anybody who left a comment on a class. Because I want to make sure they're in my classes watching those videos. And then I gave one point to just comment or like on somebody else's post. Just because you're still interacting and I wanted to give that away. But one girl clicked it. And um. Today she created a sharing my oily journey Insta and is contemplating the biz. So just, just go, just, just go. You never know.
What were those points for? Did you, did you say, you know, if you get this many points, I give you this? Or like, what, what, what are the points?
Oh, that, well, I had one gift, okay? I'm not, I'm not trying to give like 10 or 15 gifts out. So there's one. And the person who got the most is who I sent the gift to.
Got you. Okay.
And then I give away, um, I give one free oil away every month with Bingo. So that gets people into the team space. And in order to claim it, they have to post. Um, you can actually see it here. This is my post that I created. And then if you see in the comments, the person who won said Bingo and like she left her, her Bingo in the comments. And that's how she claimed her. So that makes her get in there too. So challenges are great, but also telling them. That it's in, if they ask you a question, if you've posted about it, tell them, oh, it's in the group chat or it's in the team discussion board. Direct them there so they know they can find stuff there. Really cool, which I actually didn't know about until recently. Is that um, you can search, you guys, you can search your discussion room. I did not know this. So now if I know darn well that I posted something about valor, I'd be like, go to the discussion room and just type in valor. Or hey, I'm having trouble with sleep. Go to your discussion room, type in, sorry, I can go into my settings, type in sleep. And then it's gonna pull up anything that you posted about sleep. You know, direct them to those things. Probiotics, people, I posted this. I was chatting with my team about it. So I would say challenges get them there and making sure that that's where your info is. They're gonna, they're gonna know where to, and directing them there, they'll know where to go.
All right, we've got, here's, here's a question. About how long do you figure it took you from, uh, from, from can, from start to. Your people in, obviously knowing that everything's always a work in progress. From I'm gonna build a vault for my people to I am putting my people in and we're using this. About how long did that take you?
How, wait, I'm sorry. How long did it take me to, can you ask me again?
Yeah, yeah. So from I am starting to build a vault today for my people.
Yeah.
To I'm putting my people in the vault. So obviously you didn't necessarily have all the images and you didn't have everything in there that you have in there today.
Oh, day one.
You put your people in there immediately.
Yeah. If all you see is a link that doesn't work, you're gonna see a link that doesn't work. And then I'm gonna talk to you about, yo, I'm building this space. Check it out as it grows.
Lean into it. I love it. All right. I hope you guys, if you take nothing else away from today, embrace the mess. Just do the thing.
Do it.
Just do the thing. Oh, my gosh, I love it. So there's definitely a lot of, uh, there's more questions in here, definitely the Q and A if you want to take a look. But obviously, if you had notes for anything else you wanted to share, like, please do, anything.
Um, I didn't. I just wanted people to be able to see inside the team space. Because I, I know when I was building my Get Oiling, people were like, actually, I think I've noticed on the website quite a bit. There are way for us to share our spaces and the only way is to actually add someone into your space to let them look around. So I just wanted, if there's anything specific people want to see, um, from the team space or anything, I, I, I'm an open book. I'll totally share the team area. Um, I do have, I guess I should have said this, but I do have um. A brand partner vault too. And then this is. Another vault I'm creating because I'm trying to figure out how to use. Some of my other resources I pay for, but um, my team, my team vault is the same. My goal is for my business brand partners. To be able to roll through on their own without me. My goal is to use Get Oiling to help people walk down their own path with my guidance, but I don't have to sit there, hold their hand. My goal is to guide them without having to be physically present. And that's the key. The key to sustainability is creating a system that flows itself. So no matter how big you grow, the exact same system is implemented. And uh, and that's what I want to do for my brand partners. So I, I started that out actually. And what I did, believe it or not, each one of these lessons is just a link to the video. That Young Living put out when our compensation plan was released. So. And then here's the PDF that Young Living released. So I literally just took what Young Living took out and I just divided it into little sections.
Yeah, there is such little need for creating original content for this stuff, you guys, like borrowing from what already exists. Obviously, the things you have permission to use, anything that Young Living creates. It's, it's not only a shortcut, it's a more duplicable path. Because now your people don't have to look at what you've done and believe that they need to go and create something from scratch in order to do something. Simple and straightforward. So, um, yeah, more, more questions coming in.
Yeah. So how big is your team? So you guys, my team is small. I'm little. I think 65. And my brand partner and I have technically three brand partners, but only one is super active. Um, and then we're having a business curiosity call on Monday that four people are interested in. So that'll be cool if we get a couple more brand partners from that. So I guess if you learn anything from me, do it messy. And let people see you doing it messy. Like, let your team see I'm trying because I'm not that big diamond that you could have went with. You could have went with Emily Rucker, Lacey Dilworth. We all know these names. We follow them. We love them. Sometimes we wish we were there. You can be them. So just let your team know that you're messy right now, but you're gonna get there and that you're gonna get them what we all wish that we had. And and that's what I'm trying to do. So just do it, do it messy. Um, and the second thing I want you to learn for real is. Is consistency when you're seeing no growth. I think one of the girls that we all follow, um, well, a lot of us follow. She talked about the fact that a bamboo tree grows for the first five years underground. You're not gonna see it sprout for five years. So just remember that, especially with Get Oiling. And like, I know people are talking like, how do you get people in your discussion room and stuff? It takes time. It takes you consistently posting and talking to yourself for a month. Like, it doesn't happen overnight. Do not get discouraged. And that's the, that's the thing, other thing I want you to learn, like from me, especially with like this and like learning, don't get discouraged. Do it messy and do it when you feel like no one's listening. Because seeds are being planted and things are growing. You just don't know it. And if you're not consistent, you don't stick with it, you're never gonna get the point, to the point where you grow. You're gonna always keep going back to the start line. So even if no one's shown up in your discussion board, post there every day. And when I post there, it's, hey, this is what I'm diffusing. Hey, this is the problem I'm having. I also do, um, twice a month, I do an Ask Sadie Anything question, allowing my whole team, like, what do you need to know? It opens people up. And someone came out like, my husband just got diagnosed with this. What do I do? So, um, but for three months, nobody responded to those. But you just do it. Keep going.
That is amazing advice. Um, oh, Jolene, we, we had a couple of questions. What, what Good Oiling plan are you on? Do you know?
Yo, Greg. I think I'm on premium.
Yes, premium.
I think, I think I took the lead because of the text message. No, that's separate. I, oh, I took a number of, because I wanted, I wanted more vaults. That's exactly what it was. I took the lead because I wanted more vaults. But I was on the, the lower end for a while until I had, until like I had my team space. And then when I was like, okay, I want to build a brand partner space too and like a challenge space, that's when I grew. Or it could have been classes. I'm a huge fan of utilizing the classes that break it down into, excuse me, into lessons. So it could have been that too, but I'm premium, which is what? I don't even know. I think $29? Between, 49, 50?
Yeah, 49, something like that.
Well, I think the first one's 29 or something. I don't know. But I mean, I, I dropped that at Target on accident. So this, the just, it's, it's so organized. It's worth it. It's like having a personal assistant all day, every day.
All right.
The lower one is sufficient to begin with, why you learn this system? Absolutely, Liz. Absolutely. Absolutely.
100%.
I think I started with a dollar and then I was like, yeah, I definitely want to grow this. And then I got the small one and then like a year later, I think I upgraded. It is worth every penny. How many volts do you use from go? Do you pay more for? No, I only have three right now. If anything, I think I needed classes before more volts. But I think you can even, can you do à la carte? Can you add classes à la carte?
You can add unlimited as well.
Yeah. So even if you're just like, I don't need all the shebang. I don't need all those credits. I don't need this or that. You can just add more instant classes, but, uh, I only have three. So Colette, I don't need five. Maybe one day.
Alright, couple of questions about the discussion room, how you got it started, how you got people engaged and sort of how you got people in in the first place. I know you mentioned you did send a text message out, but noting that a lot of your, your people are millennials and are going to be more likely to respond to text. You know, that was something that you found to be effective, but do you have anything else to that end and starting the discussion room?
So it's funny because I guess I could tell you what I'm going to do because I, you live and you learn. So the, the first thing that was really important is sending something like this so that your people know it's coming. This is introducing them to the partners or to your brand partners or not your brand partner. Your team space in general, they have to know it exists and wait for the invitation. So when you get someone, whatever you send them, whether it's a welcome gift or a welcome text or something, mention your team education space. Also, when you're talking on your Instagram, hey, I shared in my team and like, um, education, make it known that you have one that's huge. And then I think what I'm going to do from now on is I'm actually going to record a video of my, uh, kind of like a really, really quick. This is the team education space. You can get this, 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 and this. And I'm going to send it to everybody that's a new customer, because I think sometimes people are confused like with the vaults and the space and everything. So if you record a short video, hey, I'm Mercedes. You just joined my team. I'm super excited to have you. Let me show you a quick, what our space looks like. This is it. Uh, all you gotta do is look for that email from me, click, create a password and boom, you're in. Let me know if you have any questions.
Mercedes, what we're looking at right now is, is that a PDF that you send out or an image? What is that? The page?
It's, this is a Canva, a, a free, you guys free. It's a free Canva template.
It's just a free thing you put in Canva.
Yeah. And then I just changed the words and, um, converted it, converted it to a, a PDF or a JPEG. And I just texted it to anyone who's new.
Perfect. Okay. So, so you've saved that as an image that you just text to, okay, perfect. That is so cool. What's in your sample bags that you hand out?
So I usually do one of either peace and calming or valor. I think my next batch, I'm going to do both peace and calming and valor. I think the, those are the two that people get hooked on the most. And then, um, yeah, I'll open it. I think this was left in the sun anyway, so I can't use it. Um, when you open it, you're going to have my, my stickers on the front. I got 200 of these for $20 on Amazon. So it's worth it. The very first thing that they get is the, this is a sample card. It has my name, my information. And then it has my, the new one has my TikTok and my Instagram, because I had my link. I had my link page here or my get oiling before, but now I just do my Instagram. Um, and TikTok, because then I get my business card. So this is my business card with my business name on the front and then the QR code that goes to my link page on the back. And then a little two milliliter roll of peace and calming. So here's your sample. Here's what's in it and how to use it. And here's how you contact me if you want more.
Love it. Love it. Okay. Uh, when you're doing the points, uh, where you're, you know, having a, a little mini challenge, getting people to engage. How are you going about tracking, um, those points for people? Are you just, are you relying on like your notifications from good oiling or what does that look like?
Well, my team is small enough to where I could literally scroll through June and just kind of count. I could be like destiny one. Addy one, like it's small enough to where I can just, because I'm trying to get people in, but it got bigger. I don't know. Maybe I'd pay my little sister to count for me or something, but for right now I can hand count.
Alright, and Cheryl had a question as well. So, um, curious about how you're transitioning from listening to someone's issues, going further back to when you're sharing, uh, into making a bundle recommendation.
Um, quick, if, if you've already developed the like, no trust and they're coming to you, that's not cold anymore. That's a warm market. That's someone who already knows you, likes you and trusts you and is asking for help. If that's the case, you don't want to say, oh, I can help you. Um, I have some things. If you really want to try it, let me know. No, they're already letting you know. They're there. Hey, I have, I have really bad respiratory issues or I'm having, do you have anything, you know, I don't know what to do. Actually I have some things I think that would fit you perfectly. Go to life steps, find some information on a specific oil or whatever. Like here, I think this matches you really well. And then here is a selection of products, I think that would match you. You can just select what you want and check out. You have any questions, let me know. That's, that's how I would do that. Cause they're already coming at you. There's nothing, there's nothing awkward or icky if someone's asking you already.
Yep. 100%. Oh, that's so cool. Okay. So there was a question about what you use to send your samples off if you're mailing them. Uh, there is, uh, there's definitely some, some chat happening here with some suggestions, but what do you use?
So if they get the premium starter bundle, they're going to get this. So they're just going to get oil. I like people to feel like they started out ready to go. So they're going to get their roller bottles. I make them cute. These are cheap guys. If you, if you want to know where I get my stuff from, let me know. They get some stickers and a sample and I like this thing. And then I use a five by seven. That's what I think that this is based on what it is compared to my hand to send it out. If not, if I'm sending something smaller out, a black padded envelope with my sticker on the front.
And is it like postal service?
Yeah. Yeah. So, um, if you're starting to send stuff out quite a bit, I would check out somewhere like Pirate Ship and get like your own little sticker. You don't even have to have a printer. You can literally print it and use tape. But Pirate Ship is cheaper and you can just go and drop your stuff off if you, if you're doing it beforehand. Um, but I do, I go to the postal office, but I've also developed relationships and dropped off rollers with them all. And the guy was like, my husband like, he's like, my wife might like this. I'll give it to her. And I was like, cool. Thanks. So.
That's maybe something you, you do this samples a little bit more in person, right? It sounds like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I will send samples to my team though. Like if my team, like one of my members is like, I like my muscles, my, my muscle testing done before I take a supplement. So I actually sent little glass jars of one pill of all the supplements I had, sent them to her. One person was scared to spend money on something. So I had a little drop, little drop where you can get off Young Living. Put some in there and said, I'll send you some. You can smell it before you buy it. So based on conversations and stuff I do, Ningsha is huge. I do the, um, life steps as a seven day Ningsha challenge with a little code that you text. And then they get a text message every day. All I do is shove seven things of Ningsha in a box and send it. And the rest is like a systematic thing. But I use those same boxes. Um, so it, yeah, I, well, I both. But I think samples are, once this, they get this, if, um, this is just if you create an account. Um, I'm a huge believer in trying before you buy. There, there, people will fall in love with the product. You just got to get it in their hands. So I just created these like free little, I printed them at home, these little roller bottle things. And they get this and some samples of some, and they just, it's just for creating an account.
I love it. So many great questions today, you guys. Mercedes, thank you so much for being so generous with your time and really opening up and sharing all this. Is there anything that you would like to maybe leave us with? Anything else you'd like to add before we go?
Um, no. So Bob, I see you having questions, answers. Yes. And this is the essential book. If anybody has any questions about anything, last time I was here, a lot of people reached out to me on Facebook and asked questions. I'm open. I would have loved to have someone to reach out to when I started. So if you have any questions, hit me up on IG or Facebook. I'll send you links. I'll send you answers. I'll, I'll do whatever y'all need. Just let me know. But come follow me if you want, like come hang with me. I may not be out of your taste, but you can at least try it out. Don't come if you're looking for less though, because that's, that's not who I am.
I love it. Alright. Well, thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much for being here and thank you all for being amazing and asking so many great questions. We will be back here same time next week. Again, if you would like to join us, uh, at two o'clock Eastern time, that's one hour from now. We will be doing a live training on attract well, on how you can create a link and bio page like the one that Mercedes has. So, um, we look forward to seeing you there. That is trackwell.com/officehoursmercedes. Thank you. We will carry this conversation on in our good oiling Facebook group. And, uh, yeah, I look forward to chatting with you again soon. Alright, thanks everybody.
It was a blast you guys. Thank you so much, everyone. It was fun.
Have a great week y'all. See you next time. Bye.